May we call this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board, excuse me, to order with a moment of silent reflection, please. Would you call the roll call, please?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfels?
Please excuse.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
At this time, we would entertain any comments on non-agenda items, and before I recognize anyone, I'd like to read this statement. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff, members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comments on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone who would wish to speak on a non-agenda item if you would care to come forward to the mic and give your name and address? Thank you, seeing none. May we have a approval of the consent agenda? Is there anyone, any Board member who would like to have an item withheld on the consent agenda for a separate action? Okay, seeing none. May we have approval? To approve? Mary Jo? And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes?
I would just like to recognize Julie Arts, who is listed under resignations in Human Resources tonight. I've had a great deal of interaction with Julie during her time at Lincoln, in my time at Lincoln, and she was an asset to the district, and I'm sorry to see this on here. I'm sorry to see her go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? If not, the motion is in order to be approved. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee, would you read the recognitions?
West High School and Wilson Elementary Wauwatosa STEM have been selected as Wisconsin PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Schools of Merit, for the 2010-11 school year. Schools implementing PBIS with fidelity meet one or more of the following requirements: 80 percent or higher on the expectations taught subscale and the overall scale of the school-wide evaluation tool; 80 percent or higher on the team implementation checklist; 80 percent or higher on the school-wide system score on the self-assessment survey; or 70 percent or higher on the benchmarks of quality. Eight schools in the district kicked off PBIS last fall. Since then, an additional four schools have been trained and began PBIS efforts this spring. In addition to West High School and Wilson Elementary Wauwatosa STEM, East High School, along with Madison, Washington, and Roosevelt Elementary Schools also achieved fidelity in Tier One this school year. The purpose of the Wisconsin PBIS network is to increase the capacity of Wisconsin school districts to establish positive school culture through the implementation of PBIS. Secondly, East High School senior Alex Swenson of Boy Scouts Troop 21 has completed all the requirements, received National Boy Scouts of America approval, and has earned the rank of Eagle Scout. He is the 154th Eagle Rank, excuse me, his is the 154th Eagle Rank awarded by Boy Scout Troop 21 in 89 years of scouting in Wauwatosa.
Board members, any comment? Thank you. Administrative contracts, Dr. Erdl? Oh, excuse me, I think we'll have the motion first and then, okay. Mrs. Fee, would you read those, please?
It is recommended that the School Board approve the administrative contract for Jefferson Elementary Principal Stephanie Jaitner, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce, effective July 1, 2011, for 221 days per year at a salary of $95,000. It is further recommended that the School Board approve the administrative contract for Wauwatosa West High School Associate Principal Matthew Byers, effective July 1, 2011, for 221 days per year at a salary of $76,000, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Meyer? Now, Dr. Erdl?
We have, Stephanie and Matt are both here this evening, and I asked them if they would like to come forward and say anything to the Board, but I think we've, I know we went through a very extensive process, the number of applications were many for both of these positions, and I feel very happy to introduce Matt and Stephanie as our two newest administrators to the administrative team in our school district, so, welcome.
Would you like to come up to the mic and say something, please?
Hi, I'd just like to say thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to serving the students of the Wauwatosa School District. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Once again, I want to echo Stephanie. Thank you very, very much for this opportunity. I've been in this business for quite a while, and you get a feel for when there might be, when there's a situation where you really think that it's really going to, your past experience and the opportunity that presents itself are really going to match well, and I think that's what's going to happen here, and so I'm very, very excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. And we welcome both of you, and hope your time will be enjoyed and long in Wauwatosa. Board members? Okay, can I just? Yes, please.
We were, of course, given your resumes, and I just wanted to congratulate you both on these. Very impressive, and as Dr. Erdl said, I know that it was a very extensive search and decision, so, welcome, and we look forward to working with you as well.
Is there any community comment or question? Seeing none, Mrs. Galanti?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Is Mr. Ross Miller here?
Yes, he is.
Thank you. Dr. Erdl?
The, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion in the news related to schools and through the state budget process and the Budget Repair Bill or Act 10, and some of the things that have gone back and forth in relation to school choice and the voucher programs. Recently, something was put into the budget that could have an impact down the road on Wauwatosa. I think we also know that the choice program expanding to Milwaukee County, where Milwaukee, Milwaukee City students can attend parochial schools in Milwaukee County, will have an impact on our community as well. So this evening, we have Dan Ross Miller here from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and he's just going to talk a little bit about where this legislation is at and answer any questions that Board members may have. So Dan is here with us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Let me begin by inviting you with some handouts here. Well, I'd like to begin by thanking you for inviting me to speak to you tonight. As Dr. Erdl indicated, my name is Dan Ross Miller. I'm the Director of Government Relations for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The voucher program, or the parental choice program, has been with us since the 1990-91 school year. It has grown considerably over that time. There are currently a little over 20,000 students participating in the program, which up until now has been limited to City of Milwaukee residents. The initial eligibility up until now has been that the family income must be below 175 percent of the federal poverty limit or level, and while eligible, the family income can go up to 220 percent of the federal poverty level. The budget that was just signed into law by Governor Walker makes a number of changes to the voucher program, and they're outlined in that sheet, but I'll just briefly summarize them with your indulgence. Previously, there was a cap of 22,500 students who could participate in the voucher program in Milwaukee. That cap now is completely gone, and an unlimited number of students can participate. What impact that will have on the City of Milwaukee, MPS enrollment, as well as what impact that may have on open enrollment to surrounding neighboring districts remains to be seen. In addition, one of the reasons I say that is that in addition to lifting the income eligibility cap, the budget also raises the, I'm sorry, in addition to lifting completely the enrollment cap, the budget raises the income eligibility cap now to 300 percent of federal poverty, and as the sheet indicates, that's about 64,500 for a family of four. For a married couple, the budget would allow the exclusion of the first $5,000 of income, which effectively raises the cap to about $71,500 per year. And within the City of Milwaukee, that's a reasonable family income. In addition, the budget would allow schools that participate in the voucher program at the high school level to charge tuition, if the family income is above 220 percent of the federal poverty level. So there will be an opportunity for those high schools that currently have complained about the, their difficulty with educating children for the $6,400 roughly that the voucher system provides, to have a new source of income that presumably will allow them to expand their offerings to high school students. As I believe was mentioned, any private school in Milwaukee County is now eligible to receive students through the parental choice program. The impact of those provisions could be substantial in terms of both the impact on City of Milwaukee property taxpayers, a shift in participation to some schools that currently aren't a part of the program but presumably will apply and will become part of the program, perhaps not this fall, but going forward, and because of the lifting of the income eligibility, many more students are potentially able to participate in the voucher program. Now, one of the things about the voucher program is that students are eligible, if they qualify, as are other private school students, to have pupil transportation provided to them. So when you're in a situation where you're a parent and you're weighing whether perhaps to open enroll, let's say to Wauwatosa or another district, versus trying to get into a private school, a consideration may be that if you go to the private school, you'll have your transportation paid for, whereas if you open enroll, the parents would be responsible for providing transportation. So that's something that you may want to take into consideration. Those were the changes that were made in the budget. There are a couple of other pieces of legislation that I think will potentially impact on schools that join Milwaukee, and I should say that also, the budget expanded the voucher program to Racine. The Racine District includes a number of what used to be townships surrounding, some of them are now villages, Mount Pleasant, Caledonia, are part of the Racine School District, so, and Racine comes into the program now with the higher income eligibility limits. It will gradually ramp up. For the first year, there'll be 250 students allowed into the program, the second year 500, and the third year, there'll be no limit on the number of students that can participate in Racine. I think that reflects a pattern that will be repeated or replicated elsewhere in the state with the higher income eligibility limits. Originally, the choice program was, started with the intention of providing an option for parents, bless you, of poor children who really didn't have other options available to them. In other words, the voucher enabled them to choose a school other than their local neighborhood school, if the parents' means wouldn't enable them to, you know, to either move or to pay the tuition in a private school. So that, the expansion to Racine was one thing. During the Joint Finance Committee debate on the bill, Governor Walker gave a speech in Washington, D.C. to a group that is a strong proponent of private school choice, and in that speech, he indicated that he wanted to see the program expand to two other cities besides Racine, Green Bay and Beloit. After it became somewhat evident that there wasn't a great deal of community support in Beloit, they kind of dropped out of the picture, but Green Bay remained a very interesting situation. The Finance Committee met the week of, well, they met on June 2nd, so the first week in June, they met, and they approved the Racine voucher plan. They indicated at that point that they, that that was the extent of the expansion, but the following day, they came back and they passed a motion to add Green Bay. Kind of an interesting provision, it called for a petition to be signed, so there was a threshold that had to be met, and then vouchers could go ahead in Green Bay, and it was 25 percent of the pupils in the Green Bay School District. Green Bay has a little over 20,000 pupils, so it's a little over 5,000 signatures that were required on the petition. What's interesting about that is that there was no requirement in either the case of Racine or Green Bay that there be some demonstration that the schools were not serving the needs of students in terms of student achievement. There was no opportunity, there were no public hearings held, no opportunity for public input, and in the case of Green Bay, there was no opportunity for anybody who might have been opposed to the expansion of the private school option in Green Bay to voice their opinion, and the School Board there and the superintendent were very much opposed to the expansion. They asked me, what if I get three or four times as many signatures to the contrary? And I said, well, that would, that would be an expression of community sentiment, but it wouldn't affect whether the vouchers would go forward. So we're in a, we're in a bit of a lull with, I think, right now with regard to the basic voucher program, although one of the things that concerned us a great deal was the way the language adding Racine was drafted, and I have a copy of that. There's a provision in our state constitution that prevents the enactment of what are called private laws, so in a budget bill, they're not able to say, expand the private school choice program to Racine. They have to describe Racine in a way that tries to uniquely describe Racine, and there might have been some ways to do that. They could have talked about a school district with a certain number of students located in a county in southeastern Wisconsin, but the language that they chose is on the page here, and the number seven comes from the item that, I copied this from in the nonpartisan Legislative Fiscal Bureau document, and they added four criteria. The district's equalized value per member must be no more than 80 percent of the statewide average. The district's shared cost per member must be no more than 91 percent of the statewide average. The district must be eligible for high poverty aid, and the district is located in whole or in part in the City of the Second Class. What set off some alarm bells for us was that Green Bay fit three of these four criteria, and the only one it didn't fit was that it, its shared cost was, I believe, about 92.2 percent of the statewide average. So it was, it spent a little bit more money per pupil than Racine did, but given the nature of the current budget and the cuts to education, if, when all was said and done, Green Bay made substantial budget cuts, it could easily fall below that level and therefore become qualified for this program. I say that just to indicate that I don't think we're done with school choice expansion in this state. There's a very strong lobbying effort behind school, private school choice. There are a couple of other bills, one of whom is authored by the state senator from Wauwatosa, Leah Vukmir, would extend a private school voucher option to special education students, and that bill's being redrafted at this point, but as originally introduced, if you had a child with special needs, you could on, with no notice, no advance notice to the school district, apply to a private school. Now, most private schools don't take students with serious disabilities, but you would apply with no notice in advance to the public school district, and upon receiving the application, the private school would make a request to the public school to cost out that child's IEP, and then that would go to the DPI. DPI would verify that, and the private school would then receive that amount, the cost of educating the child in the public school plus the IEP cost in perpetuity. In other words, for as long as that child is enrolled in the private school. It's unclear what kind of review mechanisms there would be. If a child was found no longer to have the disability, would they continue to receive that payment, et cetera? So that's part of the reason that bill's being reworked. As I recall, the money would come from the state aid for that school, for the public school district from which the child came. There is another piece of legislation that could have a similar impact on school districts statewide, and that is a bill to create independent charter schools. We do have some independent charter schools currently in Wisconsin. They are located entirely within Milwaukee County with the exception, or I should say the City of Milwaukee, with the exception of one school that's run by the UW Parkside. What the new bill would do is it would create an independent charter school authorizing board that would be housed in Madison with a staff of five people, and if someone wanted to create a charter school, an independent charter school, under the bill, as it's been reworked, they would apply jointly to the school district in which the school would be proposed to be located, and the state board, and the school district would then have 90 days to work out a deal with this group that wanted to form an independent charter school. If they couldn't work it out, they could ask for another 30-day extension, but if they couldn't work it out, then it would go to the state board, and the state board could approve it, could approve it being located within a public school district, and any students that then decided to go to that independent charter school would receive the state payment of $7,775 as a deduction from the state aid of the public school district from which they came. So it would function a little bit like open enrollment, but with a higher payment going to the receiving school. So these are, these are a couple of the bills that are moving along that provide alternatives to traditional public schools. Both the voucher program and the independent charter school program are funded with what are called some sufficient appropriations, which means, in other words, as much money as they need to make the payments to these schools, these schools get. Generally, that would mean that they wouldn't be subject to any cuts when we have budget cuts of the kind that we had this year in the budget that affect public schools generally, and the money, as proposed in these bills, would come from essentially siphoning off as a first call on the general aid money, monies that would go to all of the school districts in the state as general aid. So it's that, it's that impact that would reduce all of the aid to all 424 school districts that has us concerned a little bit about the impact of these bills, and part of the reason I wanted to share the information about them with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, and I hope, I hope I covered some of the things that you.
Board members, questions? Mr. Meyer?
I'd like to be down here to discuss.
Oh. What are these schools, these schools that the school choice money goes to? Are they secular, religious, pro-choice, pro-life? Are there any rules about what type of school receives the taxpayer money in these programs?
Well, to be certain, they are private schools. They can be secular, but by and large, they're religious. A child whose parents ask to be opted out of religious instruction can be opted out, but it takes an affirmative act by the parents to excuse them from the religious portion of the education, so unless, unless there's some action, they would receive the religious training.
Well, the opt-out, you know, I have friends who, children attend public schools, and celebration of Halloween is contrary to their religious beliefs, so they opt out of Halloween participation, and they opt out of other holiday participation as well. In my history with school districts, it's really about the money, and we welcome all those who wish to opt out of Halloween because we still get their state aid money, and that helps fund many things here. So the opt-out, to me, is sort of irrelevant, so the fact is that taxpayer money does go to various religious schools of different faiths and denominations, and various private schools of different beliefs on different social topics, that were we to take a position in this public school district, we would have people lined up out to the street wanting to have some input as to what we were teaching and how we were teaching it, but for these voucher-funded school situations, is there any accountability like that to the state or to the taxpayer, so to speak, or are they independent as far as their? Or are they independent as far as their decisions about what to teach the kids and how to teach them?
At risk of possibly misstating this, I don't believe I'm misstating this, but I don't believe there really are any limitations. I'm, I've always been intrigued by the possibility that you might have a Lewis Farrakhan Academy, for example, open up potentially as a, as a private school eligible for funding under this program, or some, you know, something else that might be similarly provocative.
Well, I suppose, to me, the point is not that I'm for or against anyone teaching their religion, it's that the taxpayer money is going to help fund that. And that's a serious matter to me. So, okay, that's the end of my question.
You know, I hope I didn't overstep.
No, no, it's just very clear that, you know, some, I believe the taxpayer money should not go to religious schools in K-12. It creates all kinds of complications and confusion as far as what is being funded and the accountability to the taxpayer. So I just needed to be clear that that funding pipeline is available for those private schools here. Okay, thank you.
There is lower accountability in a number of regards. Those private schools are not subject to the open records law, they're not subject to open meetings laws. Clearly, their boards are not elected. They don't stand for reelection as a means to be held accountable to the taxpayers or the voters. The schools are not required to have certified teachers. Up until last year, a high school diploma was sufficient. Now, beginning with the school year that just ended, a college degree is required, but no certification. And we are grandfathering in all those teachers who taught with just a high school diploma previously. They have five years to get, to get a bachelor's degree now. So that, just some of the examples. One of the continuing issues that arises in Milwaukee is that these schools have enrolled a far smaller proportion of special education students. Now, they're not allowed to discriminate in the admissions process, but they, my understanding is they will counsel parents that, you know, we're really not well-equipped to deal with your child, and you might be better off to place your child in a public school where, and part of the argument is that in the public schools, there are aids that accompany special education costs. Now, we don't, we don't have a one-to-one linkage between a child and special education costs. You don't get a set amount per child. You get your prior year costs for special education reimbursed by the state aid formula. But the point being that special education students are underrepresented in the private choice schools, and there's been a lawsuit filed by a disability rights advocate group alleging discrimination.
Michael?
A lot of the things that you said and Mr. Meyer asked about are documented on the DPI website. There's a list of every, every current choice school, and the bulk of them are religious schools.
And many of them are largely dependent for their continued operation on the public funds that they receive through the voucher program. Without those public funds, it's not clear that probably half of them could continue.
The part of this that concerns me and has concerned me all along is the accountability. And I know that last year was the first year that these schools were required to take the WKCE. None of us like the WKCE. We know about its imperfections, but when you're measured, you know, with the same tool, also on the DPI website are scores. The ones that are the most shocking are the racial and ethnic differences in scores and the special needs, as well as the number of kids that are enrolled in those, in those classes. So I haven't heard in any of the discussion at the state level or anything that you're sharing tonight, or even in Senator Vuukmier's bill, anything that addresses achievement. Am I missing some part of the discussion, or is that not, is that not a piece of it?
Well, the, I think that the premise that was used to sell the idea initially was that these schools would provide better academic performance for low-income students. That really hasn't been the case. In general, they've performed about the same or worse than the Milwaukee Public Schools, particularly when you, and I should say, and even when you match the students demographically so that you, you're doing students from similar backgrounds. So that has not been fulfilled, and I guess the question is for people, why, you know, if they were, if they were clearly better, that might be an argument for expanding them, but they're not clearly better, so why are we going down this road?
Is there going to be an organized effort? First of all, I don't, I'm not sure that all of our taxpayers are fully informed. I really am not sure. I, you know, with this fervor for expanding the program, I don't know if people understand where their money is going, as Mr. Meyer said.
Well, we will be mounting an effort to develop public education materials. I really think that the best antidote to expansion of voucher schools is to organize the parents, consumers of education in communities to, in support of their public schools. And there are efforts underway. I was in touch with people from the Racine School Board where this expansion is occurring. They're looking at developing a parent, community engagement effort. For them, it may be a little bit after the fact, but there are a number of school districts in the Milwaukee area, I believe Shorewood, Nicolay, Whitefish Bay, Mequon, Pinsville, all have active parent advocacy groups that are, that have either been in existence or are forming. And there are some other models as you go further into Waukesha County, Kettle Marine and others, that have groups that try to, try to educate parents and others in the community about issues and the need to be advocates for public schools.
In addition to that.
And if you're interested, I'd be happy to, to work with you, to give you some ideas on what you could do here in Wauwatosha to.
In the meantime, is there a way to put pressure on some kind of accountability? We are leaving so many kids behind when you look at these statistics, and they are the neediest, neediest of the children. I don't know if there's some way to do that. Like I said, I have not heard that as part of the discussion ever. And with all this activity going on, I was hoping at least somebody was going to step up and say, let's make sure we know where this money's going, let's make sure we know that we're getting results for it. So, you know, it might be a second effort in addition to.
We do, in our state, have a serious problem with educating our poorest children. We have one of the largest achievement gaps in the nation. And whether it's in the public schools or in the private schools, we are not serving those children, I think, as well as we could be or need to be.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
This is my first question. Some clarification from Dr. Earl to see if Mr. Meyer, almost they're promoting a board action against voucher school programs. And I guess I'd like some clarification on that.
Go ahead, please.
So far, I've only expressed my opinion after trying to gather information here. I do believe it's a serious matter that taxpayer money goes to religious schools. I'm religious, that's my business, everybody's religion is their business, but the taxpayer money is another matter. My second issue is that from this board chair, I have voted to be with the governor's program, him stating that, Governor Walker stating that we don't have enough money, we have to make cuts. We did have layoffs in Wauwatosha in support staff employees. We do have fewer teachers funded this year in the secondary schools, on the order of nine teachers, Dr. Earl, correct me if I'm wrong. We participated willingly, in good faith, to reduce our costs in the name of the state needing to meet a fiscal challenge. Now we hear that some of the state taxpayer money, after we voted to lay people off, to reduce teaching staff in our high schools, after we've made those decisions, now we learn about eleventh-hour moves to send state money to private schools. I feel a little bit betrayed. And have I formulated a proposal for a resolution? I haven't got that far in my mind yet. I mean, that would be a board position. But, I mean, my gosh, I was one of the ones who proposed outsourcing one of our employee groups. I still think, based on our fiscal situation, eventually we'll have to do it. And we may have to reduce more positions from our teaching staff. But to be doing that while the state is funneling money to private schools, I have a hard time with that. And so I don't know, I haven't thought through what action items to take. I don't want this to be interpreted as partisan, these comments. For example, "I am grateful to Governor Walker for creating a competitive labor market between public school districts. The changes in the bargaining rules allow us to pay teachers based on performance, and we will be competing with other public school districts to hire the higher-performing teachers." And I think that's healthy, to have that free market competition. I think it's good. Thank you, Governor Walker, for helping provide us with that. So there's things I support. This particular item with related, with respect to the school choice, from what I'm hearing tonight, I do not support that, and I think it's a threat to our school district. What to do with that moving forward, I don't know.
Yes, Michael?
As far as a personal opinion, I'm not sure there's too much that we say up here that isn't based on our beliefs and, you know, even the reasons we run for the board or whatever. But this is definitely a very informed, personal decision that I'm making to talk about the kids that are being left behind. I'm going to give you just a very few stats here. They're all out there. No, I want to share these. I'd like to share these.
I'm going to ask that we not listen to the statistics at this point.
Grade three, a choice school with no students with special needs. Reading score is fifty-one point seven, math thirty point five. An MPS school with no students with special needs.
This is what I reported, I don't think we're here to discuss the statistics of the performance.
Mr. Cronin, would you move on, please?
No, I'm sorry. This is pertinent to my, this is pertinent to my points. I will give just six stats that are pertinent to what I've been saying. And I, you know, if you'd like to leave.
Mr. Cronin, would you accept that she would like to present some material to us, and I think it's only fair that she have that opportunity?
I guess that's okay. I thought the point of this discussion was the current legislation, not the theoretical aspects or the data behind whether these schools are effective or not.
Okay, you asked specifically if this is a personal opinion, and I'm telling you it's an educated opinion. And grade three in Milwaukee Public Schools with no students with special needs, reading score is sixty-seven four, math is fifty-two six. In a Milwaukee Public School with free and reduced lunch, no special needs students, reading is sixty-three, and math is forty-seven. There is a point here. There is a point here that we are pouring money into these schools with no accountability. And I'm sorry, but everything I've done on this board has been based on reaching every single child. So yes, it is an opinion, and yes, I would consider, you know, talking with whoever and bringing some type of a statement for consideration to our board.
Mr. Cronin?
Thank you. I don't doubt your sincerity at all. The point I was trying to make is what Mr. Meyer referred to, that before we have too much discussion about how we're going to evaluate or how we're going to work to change the legislation, you know, we need to consider a board resolution and then move forward. And I just wanted to clarify that you were each speaking on your own behalf, and it sounded like you were almost speaking on behalf of the board, and I just wanted to clarify that. But I don't doubt the sincerity of your beliefs.
I have one question about the legislation. It seems I remember reading that in the current legislation, the vouchers would be allowed to go into second-class cities, but they had to have a certain percentage of students that qualified for free lunch. It's now, but that, that was going to be taken out. Are you fairly confident that that subsequent legislation will reverse that? Well, the, I believe I handed out the sheet which lists the four criteria. Those four criteria were signed into law by the governor, as I understand it. I haven't had a chance to look at the language, but from his veto message, it didn't appear that he was changing anything. The concern was that any of these four could have been vetoed. He has, the governor in Wisconsin has the power of a partial veto. You can delete whole items, whole sentences, and you can, I'll actually read this. You can't create a new word by rejecting individual letters, and you can't create a new sentence by combining parts of two or more sentences. But you can veto digits, and you can veto out whole sentences. And the concern was that the way this had been drafted, it could potentially have been expanded to a great number of districts. And as long as it remains in the law, subsequent legislation, I believe, could, could modify it in a way that would make it once again subject to a partial veto, which could have the same impact. As it stands, I believe the four criteria are in the law as they were passed by the legislature. What has been promised is additional legislation clarifying that that law was intended to apply only to Racine, and I presume that they would define Racine in a different manner than it's defined in this bill. Or they might say something that only, it was, it's intended to allow only one district in the state to, vouchers to expand it to only one district, something like that. Now, that legislation doesn't appear to be likely to be taken up. The legislature is technically in session until this Thursday. They don't come back again until September thirteenth. In between now and September thirteenth, there will be nine recall elections for senators. They have set a deal as a They have said a deal is a deal, but a deal with whom is the question? If there would be a change in the makeup of the state senate, would that deal, you know, remain in effect? So I understand your point, I think it's still somewhat of an open question as to whether this language kind of confines the application of the voucher, private voucher schools, or whether it could be susceptible to expansion.
All right, thank you.
Further board members, please, comments. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment, please. Anyone wish to comment on this? Yes?
Jim Price, 861.
Would you mind going to the mic, please?
I don't know. Jim Price, welcome to the panel. Just, you alluded, sir, earlier in your presentation to potential effect on open enrollment in Wauwatosa schools, and I was wondering if, between you and Dr. Earl, you could perhaps provide, say a little bit more about what could happen to open enrollment with, under this legislation? And how many students are in open enrollment? How might that affect if a number of, significant number of open enrollment students chose choice schools elsewhere? What could it affect?
I'll answer one of your questions, that there's about 1,300 open enrollment students. The other piece, I'd be happy to talk with you afterward, because it's a more extensive what-if kind of discussion, and I can, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
And it should be noted that in order to qualify for the private voucher program, they would have to meet the income definitions and reside within the city of Milwaukee. So it wouldn't be, I presume that there may be some students that open enroll currently that may have, come from families with incomes greater than the limit under the law.
Seeing a more public comment, is there anyone else on the board that wishes to speak? Do you have any further comment or consideration?
Well, I think just one of the reasons I wanted to have this discussed is, as I was going through the continued legislative changes and advocacy updates, and when all of a sudden you see Wauwatosa's, the city of Wauwatosa, the Wauwatosa School District listed amongst 16 other cities that are second-class cities, and whether or not we meet any of those other three criteria that are laid out. There's been a lot of firsts in education in the past six months, and, you know, as we sit here, and a couple of years down the road, or a year down the road, whenever it may be, you know, I don't know that anybody would have thought that the voucher program was going to move into Wauwatosa the way it is now. So whether or not, it gets to the point where our students are able to do that, and whether or not you personally agree with it, as a superintendent, I have concerns about financial impacts of it on the district. So that's why it was out here, and we'll keep monitoring as it goes forward. Whether there's a resolution WSB comes forward with, that the board either supports, turns, supports or denies, that's something we can consider in the future.
We do have a resolution currently, in our resolution book, was adopted by the delegate assembly, which is our policymaking body. One delegate from each school board has a vote at that delegate assembly. And we do have a position currently opposing the use of state or federal tax monies to subsidize non-public students or parents through vouchers. So that is something that is in a part of our policy book. I do have a couple more handouts, I can leave them with the superintendent or anyone.
If you wouldn't mind giving them to Superintendent Earl, that would be fine.
I will say that one of the interesting things about this was, one of the communities that could, that meets three of the four criteria, I don't believe, I don't believe it's a second-class city, but is Abbotsford, and I'm sure it would have come as news to the people in Abbotsford that they were close to getting a private school voucher program in their community, since they had never been discussed as one of the potential sites for that. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate the opportunity to.
Thank you for bringing the information to us. Board members, any further comment? Then we will move on, excuse me, to, let me see, where are we? Right here, thank you. Okay, item number B, virtual schools. Dr. Earl?
Thank you. Tonight, we have three people with us this evening, Dennis Mahoney, who is an administrator in our district, and is kind of leading this approach on virtual schools. And also we have Gary Creary and Jim Roth from Advanced Academics. This discussion started, actually started six years ago, with online classes and online learning. Things have progressed a lot over the past six years, but what really prompted us to start moving a little bit faster was when the open enrollment window came, and we realized or recognized we had a large number of students that are electing or opting for open enrollment, applying for open enrollment, to virtual schools outside of our district. I personally have believed all along we can service those students through virtual schools in our district, and through some discussions, we have found what I believe to be a pretty good match for what we're trying to accomplish. And the three of these gentlemen are here to share more information about what we're doing. We actually have meetings set up tomorrow for those families to try to keep them back in the district and provide a virtual school opportunity. I think another statistic that kind of goes out to the need for virtual schools is currently this summer, we have over 80 students enrolled in an online econ class, in just a summer school class. So we know the desire, the need is there, it's not just something that is, something we just want to do. We know it's grown, and it's an opportunity for students to learn in different ways, to learn at different paces. And I'll introduce Gary and.
Thank you, Dr. Earl. Again, my name is Gary Creary, and I am with Advanced Academics, and we are a company that has been doing exclusively online learning partnerships with school districts for over a decade. We're one of the original virtual learning program providers out there. And just for a point of reference, the definition of virtual learning and generally accepted principles across the country is a student and a teacher geographically separated by distance, but still interacting the technology, the internet, et cetera. This evening, what I'd like to do is, I wanted to show you a brief overview about what's happening with virtual learning and the trends across the nation, some statistics and information, and some applications of some of our customers, et cetera, that you might find interesting. And then I'd like to give you a little overview of Advanced Academics, just to give you a highlight of who we are and what we do. So if you wouldn't mind, give me a minute to just launch this video here. I don't know if y'all can see this over here.
I think online learning is life-changing for students. I think that we're finding that it's being successful across the board.
It is digital, it's computers, it's their world.
I can take even more classes than you can at a traditional school, and I can get them done as fast as I need to.
And I'm learning the same, and it still sticks with me.
The current generation, from my experience, are much more instant gratification-seeking. They expect a click and get, and traditional classroom structure doesn't have that. The point is, is it's changed, but we have a system that hasn't for 100-plus years.
I have a lot of students that would be at risk for not graduating on time.
I was absolutely failing classes, and I hated the way school was going.
With the online learning, it gives our kids more options and more opportunities to feel successful in their own learning.
The online course allowed me to fulfill my health requirements and graduate.
I'm getting As and Bs instead of Ds and As.
Great part of this model is, it really motivates students to take responsibility for their learning.
Allows you to get your classes done on your terms. The quality of the education is definitely the same, if not better, because you don't have to deal with all the distractions that are in the normal classroom.
You got to make sure you read everything, you got to take tests. It's a good quality program.
There's at least five teachers online in the online chat.
You just click this chat button, and now you're talking one-on-one to a highly-qualified, state-certified teacher.
The teachers online, they're very supportive. We email a lot, they go out of their way to make sure you know that they're supporting you.
Teacher support with Advanced Academics has been very good. It also allows us to do small-group work, because other students can be working at their computers, while I work with two or three students on a subject that maybe is difficult for those individuals. This really helps parents to feel more comfortable that their students are understanding the information and not just moving forward, because the pace of the other classmates are moving forward. With the online learning, it does provide them daily graphs, as well as indicators of how well they're doing.
Every parent wants to see their kid graduate, and have a good experience through school, and through this experience. And I think it's opened them up to new possibilities beyond high school.
This is not a replacement for a real quality, talented teacher. Kids need good teachers, the program has to provide that. The software and the company we're working with provides online teachers, live teachers who the kids chat with, talk with, interact with, and who do the modeling and the reteaching and whatnot.
Advanced Academics has provided a lot of the technical support, and they're always available to help us work through any of the minor issues that we have. It's really, the program and software itself is very intuitive, and basically, anyone can figure that out.
The program has a lot of advantages. It allows kids that need to do some credit recovery to do that, if someone is ill for a while, they can come back in and catch up that way, or do it at home, because it's an online program. I service students that are students with disabilities, and they have various disabilities, from brain injury to students that have sleep disorders. So with the online learning, it gives them the flexibility to take coursework, even if they're not attending full school day program.
Most students, I do believe, will benefit from this program. Above-average kids will be given additional opportunities that especially in a small district like ours, they could not have.
Students who are struggling would also benefit, because it would allow them the opportunity to master each concept before moving on to the next one.
Average kids have an opportunity to learn in a different way.
It allows our students to take electives that they normally wouldn't be able to take otherwise, because of limited staff.
I never would have been able to take art history in class, I'd already taken all my art classes that my school offered. So the online course was a great way to get that advanced regions.
Out-of-the-box kids often respond well to this alternative setting.
And I think it's really important for our students to be, to not be limited because of our staff size in their education.
We've had quite a range of students with all the different things in here, and it seems to work for just about, anyone who's motivated can really be successful with this program.
Okay, that was just kind of to give you an overview and get some thoughts flowing about the applications of virtual learning, and some of the ways in which some of our clients are currently using our programs and services. But what I'd like to do now is tell you a little bit about Advanced Academics in particular, because virtual learning, even though it's still relatively new, has been going on for quite some time. And as I said earlier, we have been involved with virtual learning since 2000, and are working across the country with school districts in partnership to provide flexible options to complement what they're currently providing their school, their students in district now. So, you know, virtual learning and online learning can help transform how students learn, and some of the options and flexible choices that they have, that sometimes they cannot get in a traditional scheduling environment. Advanced Academics, as I said, has been doing online learning since 2000. We serve students in grades six through 12, working across the United States now. One of the things that's unique about us is we have our own full-time, highly-qualified teachers, that's a staff that works for Advanced Academics as an optional resource for the district. So if you should choose to need to supplement your teaching staff in any way, we have those resources available. We have a comprehensive curriculum that's designed specifically for online. We provide a true 24/7 learning environment, so students can work from home, from any internet-ready computer, without having to have a lot of offline materials, books, software, et cetera. They can, regardless of where they are, so they have a web-based, access to a web-based computer, they can get online and continue the work from wherever they may be. And Advanced Academics is a wholly-owned subsidiary of DeVry Inc. They have DeVry University, Keller Graduate School, Business, et cetera. It's a multi-billion-dollar company that backs Advanced Academics. This shows where we're currently working in 2011, over in 30 states right now. We also are fully accredited, NCA, which used to be CEDA, which is now Advanced Ed. And many of our courses are approved by a variety of state agencies, and also, they are NCAA-approved as well. Our mission is pretty straightforward, we want to partner with school districts to help you provide incremental options and flexible choices for your students, so that they can graduate and be successful, whatever their post-secondary plans may encompass. We've got over 170 courses, I put a packet of information out there, just for reference material for you to look at later, but there's a course list in there. at later, but there's a course list in there. Any subject, whether it's a core subject that's required for graduation, a wide variety of electives, we have a growing array of advanced placement courses that are college board-approved that are available online, you know, that you may have, covering all the graduation requirements. And again, you can pick and choose from as much or as little of those courses as you may need. There's no requirement to take them all or do anything in particular with them. Curriculum is aligned to state and common course standards. Like I said earlier, it's delivered primarily online with a few minor exceptions, like some AP courses will have some offline textbooks or science labs that may have to be complemented with some offline materials. We partner with districts and talk with them about, you know, what are your needs? You know, how would you like to implement a program? What are you trying to accomplish in your academic programs? And then, these are some of the ways that we have partnered with school districts. We don't come in and say, "This is how it should be done." We come in and talk with you to try to figure out what your needs and goals are and build a plan around that. We run statewide and regional virtual school programs in some states, and we run a lot of what I call in-district programs to supplement what school districts are currently offering to their students. We believe it's important to support the student regardless of the setting or the application. And these are some of the different types of support groups that we have available to provide support services to students. And the key thing here is the 24/7 aspect or 24/5 aspect of some of these. In the bottom-left-hand corner, you see 24/7 customer support. We have a live support desk for students, teachers, and administrators, and parents that can call in and ask questions about any of our students online based upon the policies that are set up with the partnership with the district. We have teachers that are available, and we have teachers available online, certified teachers, 24 hours a day, five days a week. So if your student's working at 11 o'clock at night on algebra and has a question on linear equations, they click on an icon on the screen that says "Talk to a Teacher," they'll get a live certified algebra teacher at 11 o'clock at night or 2 o'clock in the morning to talk about linear equations. And we also have launched another aspect this year, a 24/7 tutoring service. The tutors are not necessarily certified teachers, but they're available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they are subject matter experts. The data behind our learning management system that we've developed is very effective, very robust, and so any type of performance data from the individual student level all the way up to district-level analytical data about overall program effectiveness, it's there, and it's updated daily. So the information you have is no more than 24 hours old. We believe it's important for family involvement in a child's education, so we created a parent portal so that when, if you choose to establish a partnership with us and you want parents to be involved, you can get their email addresses, and they can have an account to monitor their child's access on a daily basis, seeing their grades, communicate with their online teachers, et cetera. So it's a very flexible option to help parents keep up with what their students are doing. One of the key words in terms of how we interact and build partnerships is flexibility. And these are three different ways that we implement solutions, and I'll talk just briefly about each of them. One is what we call a platform and content solution, where your teachers use our online courses and our online platform to deliver instruction to complement what's going on in the district. And that's one option that's available to you if you have teachers that are willing and able to teach in an online environment. And teaching in a virtual environment is very different than teaching in a traditional classroom. Second model is what we call our platform and content with tutors. This is the same, the first model, just now, we're going to put tutors available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to supplement the support your students get from your local district teachers. So if a student is going home, working on a homework assignment, as that video said, students today are in a click-and-get-information age. They don't want to wait 24 hours or the next day to, you know, talk to a teacher when that teacher might be free or in class, et cetera. Or maybe they'll want to ask a question, you know, openly in front of the class, or fear of being embarrassed or something. These tutors are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to supplement your staff to provide students more flexibility to learn when they want to learn, and it allows them to move ahead and keep up with their work more aggressively. The last solution that's common is we provide what we call our end-to-end solution, where literally, we provide all the services and support, the teachers, the platform, the courses. Now, a lot of schools will start working with us in this area because virtual learning is new, and so, you know, they may start here and then begin to phase our teachers out, incorporate your teachers into the program. And we have districts that work with us using all different models. So they may say, "Okay, well, my algebra teachers are great, and they can do this online. My science teacher isn't ready to go there yet." So you could mix and match the implementation models based upon your district's unique needs and requirements. The technology platform that we have is one that we developed because when we started, it really wasn't one that was appropriate for the K-12 marketplace in 2000. They were all post-secondary. So we've got a very robust learning management system, all the latest and greatest 21st-century communication tools, internal email system built right into the system, interactive whiteboards. So if that student's working on a math problem and the teacher needs to chart it out, they can do so on the screen with the student being in a remote location. It will appear on that student's screen. That student can write on that whiteboard as well. So there's the ability for the students anytime to go into a private one-on-one chat and ask whatever question they want, and nobody knows, other than the teacher, what they're asking about. So there's no peer pressure to, you know, not ask questions sometimes when they don't understand. So it's a very robust system that we can customize and make it, you know, unique and specific to Wauwautosa. Key thing to remember is instant help is readily available. Whenever a student wants or needs help, we have staff there to support that student and help them. We do provide interactive whiteboard, graphing calculators, equation editors online. These are different tools that are available as part of our learning management system. The content is aligned to state standards as well as common course standards, and it's designed to meet a variety of learning styles, learning modalities, you know, some text-based, some videos, some flash animation. So it's a wide mixture of multimedia tools. Another thing that we do is what we call customized branding and marketing. Sometimes districts will want us to, instead of saying "Advanced Academics," they will want it to say, you know, a local district name. So they'll say, "This is the Wauwautosa Virtual School." And then in some place down in the bottom corner, it'll say "Powered by Advanced Academics." It gives more of a customized local feel. And in large state and regional virtual school programs, we also do a wide variety of marketing activities to support those virtual programs. So we can do, you know, radio, TV spots, internet advertising, whatever the case may be, in those larger implementations. So just trying to give you an overview about Advanced Academics, you know, why would you consider a partnership with us for a virtual school program? Most importantly, we know what we're doing. We've done it for over a decade, and we do it quite well. We have that certified teacher support available to you, the teacher availability, the access being 24/5, the tutors 24/7. There's nobody out there that can provide that type of a support structure for a learning environment for students. The content is very comprehensive. As I said earlier, we've got over 170 courses from grade six through 12. We can customize those courses, modify the sequencing, add content for the district that might be unique to your needs. We've had districts come to us and ask us to build specific courses for them, and we've done that in a very, you know, short time window as compared to going out and getting something published in a traditional setting. And again, the flexibility. We can work with you and allow you to, what we call "Grow as You Go." You know, you might want to rely on us to start off, but then start phasing our support staff out and do more with your teachers as we train them to work in this virtual environment. Of course, our community involvement, the parent portal, the outreach services that we have for marketing and customized branding. And of course, we, again, we go back to the fact that we are owned by DeVry, a multi-billion-dollar company that just has a focus on quality education. So we are very interested in trying to establish a partnership, as Dr. Ertel said. We, you know, he's been looking at virtual learning for over six years. It's growing, it's becoming more and more common. And in today's economy and with the demands that students are putting on schools, the whole concept of, we're talking about vouchers and school choice, students demand a lot more than what they have had in the past in some cases. And this is a solution that would help address some of those needs, to retain those students in the district or to attract other students in the district as well. So that's just a quick overview of, you know, who we are and what we do. And with me this evening is Jim Rock. Jim is administrator that ran a statewide Minnesota virtual high school program in conjunction with Advanced Academics. So, you know, between myself on the operations and sales side and Jim on the administrative side, any questions you may have for us, we'd be glad to entertain them.
Just for a couple of clarifications in what we're looking at for this evening. We're not looking to seek board approval of any type of partnership at this time. Basically, what we're doing is shifting, we're currently using online learning, and we're basically almost exclusively getting courses from the Keel eSchool. And I think as we've gone through and looked at this program and the work we've done, we think this is a better program. And for me, I think it's been pointed out quite often in the presentation, what I see as a key component is the 24/7 and 24/5 support. But looking at further on down the road, if we choose to bring a proposal to the school board for a statewide virtual school, and it's something I've had discussions with the company about and whether or not we'd want to pursue it. So a piece that would have to go with it because the Department of Public Instruction will only allow charter schools to accept open enrollment students for full-time virtual schools. And either we can advocate, if we go down this path, either advocate for changes in legislation to allow other schools to be listed by the DPI, or we look at proposing a charter school structure to support something like that if we choose to go down it. And there's a ways to go. I think this is just how we want to start out the partnership. We want to explore the flexibility. I think there's opportunities, Mr. Mahoney and I have discussed, opportunities at the detention center or Plinko Road School and ways of getting some of those students even some credits before they leave the doors and give them some opportunities for success. But I just think this is an opportunity for us to move in this direction for a lot of reasons, and a lot of them have been mentioned. And I just wanted to kind of put that out there as where we're at right now in the development of this.
Board members? Mary Jo?
Well, as you heard earlier, I'm very concerned about accountability. And you mentioned that you have ongoing assessments and measurements and so on. How do we know, because a student graduated and passed all these online courses, how do we know that the courses were rigorous? And do you have a track record of kids who have moved from there into successfully, either into the workplace or into college or technical schools?
All of our courses have gone through a rigorous accreditation review process. I mean, just like a school district has to go through and have their materials evaluated and accredited before you are an accredited institution to grant credits to students that, you know, toward a high school diploma. We've gone through that process. Advanced Ed, several state departments, you know, the CEDA organization, NCA, we've done that. So we do have, you know, a lot of references and things that we can point to, but the courses are rigorous, they're relevant, they've been reviewed and aligned to, you know, state and national standards. Just recently, the state of Texas was going through the courses to review, and they basically had to review, they had three independent reviewers review every course to make sure that it met all the state standards and that they were rigorous to be taught at the appropriate instructional Bloom's level, at the same level that their students would be held accountable for on the tax or end-of-course exams that they're launching. So there's a lot of rigor and documentation behind, you know, the courses that we can provide for you as well. We do have a variety of data that we can show you in terms of graduation success rates of our courses, but just let me clarify that. Advanced Academics would be a contracted partner with the district. We would not be issuing credits or anything. So probably, at some point, your curriculum department would take a look at the courses, content, et cetera, in as much detail as they want to address the concerns or any questions anybody may have about, is the relevance and the rigor there for our standards? And I'm confident it is there, but the school district would be the district that would actually, I mean, the entity that would actually issue the credit for that student. I mean, we would just be a contracted service partner for the district.
And how about students with special needs?
Well, you know, students with special needs, they vary dramatically. So the question then becomes, is online learning an appropriate resource for students with special needs? And again, that would be a school district policy decision. You would decide, you know, do we, you know, what is our policy in reference to this? And if you were to launch a statewide program at some point in the future, then that would be a decision you'd have to look at. We, I mean, Jim has a lot of experience working with students with special needs in Minnesota. We have a lot of, you know, students with IEPs into the program that are very successful. It's just that you have to, when a student applies, you basically have to have a, you know, we kind of stop the application process when you see they have an IEP, and you have a discussion with them, the administrators, the parents, et cetera, about their needs of that IEP, whether or not it's an appropriate resource for online learning to address that need. Jim, you have any comments about the Minnesota program in particular?
One of the most successful kids that we serve, right, are basically your EBD kids, your young, early kids, the kids that have relatively, I'm sorry, they have relatively low self-esteem and for whatever reasons have been classified as EBD. We actually serve about 450 students currently in Minnesota statewide in special needs, and about 70% of those are EBD kids. In fact, they score higher on an average than some of our regular kids on a state exam. So bottom line is, is when a parent with a special-need kid comes to us, we have a screening committee. We look at the IEP, we have a screening committee, and obviously, the parent is part of that. And basically, the rule of thumb is if a student is within a setting of 1 to 3, that the child perhaps has a pretty good chance of being a successful online learner. There are some exceptions as you go up the ladder with a Level 4, or Level 5, or Level 6, but that's very unusual. So basically, what we're saying to the parents is that if they're a Level 4 or 5, and we've really had a good, hard look at the IEP, and if it's not something that we're comfortable with, the parent can still demand that they want to try the online program. And there's, you know, we'll say, "We don't recommend it, but if you're adamant about it, we'll give it, you know, a chance and an opportunity," because we can't deny them that right.
And then, I guess probably Dr. Ertel, I can see dozens of opportunities to use this in Wauwautosa, and I'm glad that Mr. Mahoney is thinking about ways that he could use it. But do you have any more detail about where you would like to start?
Yeah, where we want to start are the 20 or so students that have open-enrolled out of the district. Mr. Mahoney has contacted all of those parents and invited them to a meeting which is going to be held tomorrow to explain what we want to do and how we want to keep them in the district versus open-enrolling out to a different virtual school. And that's where we start. And then there's also some other, there's other students that we know this can be effective with, whether they're homebound students. I can think of a couple of students at the high school level this past year that I think this would have been a much better option for them, so.
I just want to add that in February, when we surveyed the high school students for summer school, that online learning was extremely desirable for students. And our highest enrollment class this summer, I was just going through summer school enrollments this week, or last week, and we have 76 kids in our online economics course, and it is by far our largest enrollment. So I just wanted to say that our students have, we have some indicators that our students have expressed an interest in online learning. It was also highly desirable for students that need to do makeup work, that... It was also highly desirable for students that need to do makeup work, that they had indicated that they would like online learning.
Before I ask for further board comment, Mr. Mahoney, would you like to speak to this first?
I was just going to add-
Do you mind coming up to-
Would you like me to do that, Mrs. River? You wanted to look at my tie, didn't you?
We don't know where that's going to end up, otherwise.
Want me here?
Wherever you wish to sit.
Thanks. I was just going to say that when I first met Gary, Dr. Erdl was very excited about this, and I wanted to find out something comparable. And so I kept hearing about the Minnesota situation, and I kind of was a little sneaky, but I wanted to make sure that I met the person in Minnesota to find out for myself what was going on. And what I found was that if this goes the way that I think it's going to go, is that you're going to all of a sudden get started and you're going to, we'll see applications that'll happen that we've never even envisioned. I'll give you a good example. As we were talking informally about this, I talked to Amy Harrington, who you know as a counselor over at East High School. And she gave me four different people that she'd like me to contact because in one case a student, you know, they all fit the bill. In the presentation, it talked about a sleeping issue where students just, you know, had situations there or depression, things that I wouldn't have necessarily first thought of. So I started to think about that. And I think what Jim will share with you is that this thing starts to grow almost word of mouth. And I think that that will be probably our best, our best way of learning about it. In another example, I happen to be at Children's Hospital. Some of you know that's my new responsibility in addition to this and River Hills. And I met a young lady that's a former Wauwautosa student, middle school student there. And she opened my eyes to some other things because that distance to keep her in touch with her classmates relatively simple. We also have many students there that are at the other side of the state, way in the north area, and we're having all sorts of things being shuttled back and forth. There's a better way to do it. And I think that, I just think we've got a nice opportunity here. And I'm not even sure all of the, I mean, I don't know how you can anticipate, but I think we'll be very amazed at some of the configurations of just Wauwautosa students that we can help. And then statewide, you know, I mean, it just, I think this year I need to look at just Tulsa first, but I think the applications are huge.
Thank you. Okay, board members, further?
Yes, please, Mrs. Fe.
Thank you. First off, for the presentation, I have lots of questions tumbling around because we just received this information. They're not really clear yet, but, and I'm sure that as the more definite presentation comes forward, I'll have more questions. But for right now, two things. How much does this cost? I understand the need and the desire to keep these students who are transferring out in our district, but is it really cost effective?
The, it depends upon the number of courses they take, but I think at a minimum, if a student takes an average course load, there'll be a $2,000 savings from what we would pay out for open enrollment versus the cost of a full-time student taking a course load of six credits in a year.
Okay. And this one's perhaps a little bit silly, but very, and very basic. How do you know that it's actually a student taking the test and doing all these wonderful assessments? How do you know it's not student A having student B or parent taking the test? What are your safeguards for that sort of thing?
That's a good question everybody always asks. That's a question that, you know, you could turn around and ask any teacher in any classroom, how do you know that Suzie did that work last night, type of thing? A variety of ways. Number one, if you're using our teachers, our teachers really get to know those students. Because number one, all they do all day long is interact one-on-one with students. There's no other duties as assigned, no cafeteria duty, no hall duty, no bus duty, et cetera. And so what they do is interact with those students, and they get to know what that student is capable of doing, and so they can see that work as well. And so when a student submits something that all of a sudden is light years ahead of what they have traditionally been doing, that teacher can, at his or her discretion, require that student to redo that in a proctored setting if necessary or if desired. Number two, all of our midterms and finals can be locked down, and you can require the student to take them in a proctored setting. So for midterms and finals in each course, you can say, okay, you know, you can do all the rest of the work independently, et cetera. Your teacher will monitor your work and, you know, get to know who you are and what you're capable of doing. But when it comes to midterms and finals, you must show up at location A and we'll give you a password to access that final or that midterm, and you'll take it in a proctored setting.
Okay, thank you. I do see a great potential for this. I also see a number of concerns. But again, I think some of those may end up not being an issue depending on what the proposal ultimately is, so I may save those for a later date.
And again, going back to, let me just, you know, Dr. Erdl addressed the issue of cost. Let me just say that with Advanced Academics and partnerships that we establish with school districts, we don't come in and ask you to pay an investment fee upfront for the program. You only pay for what you use as you use it. So there's no, you know, give us $100,000, we'll launch this program. You can use as much as you want. You pay for whatever you use as you use it, period. Okay? So there's not an upfront investment. And I personally believe, I tell everybody, my personal philosophy is every school district in America needs to have a virtual image of itself sitting there ready to go so that when students come in, there's a scheduling conflict, there's a personal issue, there's a graduation requirement that they can't get, they can put them into an online program immediately and address that student's need. And that's part of the flexibility and some of the, you know, the creative options that are available to school districts. So I really believe that this is a, this is a type of program that in the not-too-distant future, almost every school district in America will have access to and provide, you know, to their students. It's just a requirement. Parents and students are going to demand it.
Thank you.
At this point, really, the cost, the cost per course is less than what we've been paying for the other e-courses by about $20, I believe. But I think there's, basically, we're just going to a different, and we've had courses that students have taken from different vendors, not just the Keel e-school. So it's trying to formalize where we're going because we, I think there's a better standardization of what we're getting with the curriculum as well.
Mr. Cronin?
Thank you. Dr. Erdl, I was a little confused on the timeline. Is it your desire to open a virtual school this fall?
Not necess, no, not a virtual charter school. We're going to be offering virtual classes like we have right now. We're targeting, we're targeting through this effort, not only the students that have been taking online classes already in the district, but as well as the additional 20 students. We're hoping we can get a couple of, a handful of students at a minimum to participate in this as well for us.
So you anticipate having a contract with Advanced Academics this fall for services? You would like to move fast enough so that we have a contract with them this fall?
Correct.
And is that going to include the statewide portion?
No, not at this point. That would, to go down that route, we'd have to establish a charter school first and probably in partnership. And I haven't even discussed how that all would play out. I just know that through the DPI, you have to have a charter school if you're going to accept open enrollment students into a virtual school.
So from a financial perspective, then, we only, this is only profitable for the district if we prevent someone from leaving next year? We're not bringing in new students?
No, I think we already budget, we already have budgeted dollars for online courses. So it's not going to increase any costs. I mean, I think if you want to look at it from a perspective of within a staffing formula at the high school level, if we put it out there and said that students can select along with face-to-face courses, they can select online courses, that if, depending upon the number of courses selected, that it roughly would cost out to about $65,000 for a full-time, what a full-time teacher does right now. But again, that's, that's down the road. So this is, basically, we're just, the purpose of the presentation is to get the conversation started as to where we're going. We've already made the administrative decision to move and start accessing courses through Advanced Academics. I think a lot of the partnership ideas that come up, whether it's a hybrid course we're offering, we want to choose to use this platform versus a Blackboard platform. There's some costs associated with doing some things like that. So at this point, it's just offering classes for students within the district.
Okay. Now, I have a few questions for you.
Okay.
I'm an instructor at Milwaukee Area Technical College, and we use Blackboard. So every instructor has online access, interaction with students. We have some blended courses and some online courses. So I very much understand the value of online learning. But I have to admit, I'll be open with you, I'm coming to this with a pretty skeptical viewpoint, but I'm aware of confirmation bias where sometimes you only look for the information that confirms your viewpoint. So I'm keeping an open mind. One concern I have in general is I'll ask some questions from the financial perspective. You're a for-profit company, correct?
That is correct.
And so when you submit your quarterly statements to the corporation, does that include student achievement data or are they mainly looking at your profit statements?
I don't think that that's a requirement. I mean, we're a wholly owned subsidiary of DeVry, so for the most part, I mean, DeVry obviously monitors what is happening with the program academically, but I don't know that it's a mandatory component of that. I honestly don't know that.
And I guess another reason I'm concerned about partnering with a for-profit education company is DeVry University is among a group of universities, as you know, that have been heavily, they've been accused and are being investigated for their exploitative practices of bringing kids into schools, you know, that they can't afford and not giving them appropriate education. And I understand that that's maybe a minority of cases, but still, it's something that's taking place in the for-profit world. And I'm just wondering, for your division, how it is, DeVry's, how are DeVry's actions in those areas affecting you? Or do they at all?
We don't have any direct connection from an operational perspective with DeVry. I know that DeVry is very, I don't know how to quite describe it, but very rigorous and concerned about any expectations and any performances that, you know, might cause. I don't, I don't know of any major situation that DeVry's been involved in. I'm sure there are one-off type scenarios where you have an individual that does something in terms of recruiting perspective of students that may not be acceptable. But overall, they've got very, very stringent guidelines in terms of, you know, that part of their business. But again, they're totally post-secondary and nothing that they do influences what we do in terms of our relationship with school districts. It's a totally different model.
One thing that I was also concerned about, there was an article, a local district, Waukesha, has a statewide virtual school with a different company. And they're currently in litigation because that company merged with another school and now operate two schools in the state. So eventually, they're competing with each other. So if we were to work with you, would we, exclusivity, would we be the only district that you work with in the state?
I, right off the top of my head, I don't know. We would, that would be something that we would have to take a look at and what the implications would be for us. But I mean, we are open to that. So for example, in Minnesota, we have a statewide virtual school with a single partner that covers the entire state for full-time student enrollments and a similar scenario in other states as well. So, I mean, it's not out of the question. It just depends upon, you know, where the business environment is and what the relationship we establish with the district.
In Wisconsin, if I'm correct, and Dr. Erdl, if I'm wrong, please correct me, the enrollment for virtual schools is capped at 5,250 students. So how does that impact your decision to come into the state? I mean, if you're-
You know, as far as how we work, we do a variety of different, you know, partnerships and work with districts in different ways. A virtual, statewide virtual school option is just that. It's an option in some states where it's not in others. For example, in Texas, we work with hundreds of school districts across the state of Texas, but Texas does not allow a full-time virtual school program. We partner with school districts. My comment earlier was, I think that every school district in the nation should have a virtual, virtual image of itself up and operational. It's kind of like accessing cable TV, you know, it's there and it's ready to use, you know, whenever you want to or you feel like it's that resource that's there. But a virtual option is just another solution that's out there in states where it's a viable solution that the state has endorsed and provided, you know, to the students across the state. We don't have to do a virtual partnership with a district in Wisconsin in order to do business in Wisconsin. We can do directly, just like we're talking about with Dennis was saying, we're going to start serving in-district students exclusively. And if the need and the opportunity and the business model makes sense and the willingness is there in part of the district and Advanced Academics, then we could pursue a virtual solution that would reach out beyond your district borders. But that's not a requirement in order to have, you know, a working relationship with a district in Wisconsin.
And where I was getting at is if we have a statewide school, but statewide enrollment is capped at 5,250 students and there are maybe a dozen virtual schools already out there, so there are a limited number of slots. How does that affect your decision to stay in Wisconsin? I mean, it seems to me unless the legislation changed, that would affect the growth.
I mean, it would be something we'd look at. It wouldn't deter us from getting into the business and in the market here in Wisconsin simply because, number one, we do think we have a unique solution in that providing access to students with certified teachers 24 hours a day, five days a week, or tutors 24/7. There's nobody out there that offers that solution. And we're finding that students want information, you know, when they feel like they want it, they want to be able to get it with texting and the internet and everything else that's going on. They want it now, they don't want it away. And promoting that particular solution, you know, as part of our overall service package, our experience has been that it attracts students from other schools that are virtual, that are more like a traditional school setting. I mean, there are other providers that say, okay, well, our teachers have office hours from four to six. Okay, well, if it's, you know, three o'clock or seven o'clock and you have a question, you got to wait either till the next day or a couple hours later to get that answered. With us, the student is online, clicks on an icon, says, "Talk to teacher," pops up on a dialogue box. You got a list of all the teachers are online, they click on that teacher and go to a private chat within a minute or so.
Actually, you don't have to convince me about the tutoring part. I thought that was one of the neatest parts of your proposal. I actually wrote down here, tutoring even if we don't go to virtual, because I thought 24/7 tutoring is a nice, might be a really nice option. As far as the student-teacher ratio, who controls that? Is that something that would be contractual or is that something that you decide on a financial basis?
That's something we would work with the district on in the state policies and guidelines. But the district would, you know, set the direction and tone there and expectations.
And you might have answered this, but I'm not exactly sure. So if we move forward with Advanced Academics, I know you said we could modify some courses, but primarily the courses would be the courses that you've already developed and deliver?
That is correct. There's, pretty much, the core courses that we have developed are the ones that are available. And as I said, you know, some districts have asked us to create new ones. Houston Independent School District just recently said, oh, well, it's been a few months, but they said, "We want a seventh grade Texas history course" because there wasn't one available online. So we're launching one. They asked that back in, I want to say January, February timeframe, and we're going to be launching it this fall. So we develop a course specifically for them. Of course, it's something then we could launch across the entire state of Texas. And other districts have said, I just recently had a school district that said, you know, you have a course that's pre-algebra, but it's a one semester. We want you to do that, no, it's pre-calculus, excuse me, one semester, we want you to do that over two semesters. So we resequenced and rebuilt that course. So there are flexibilities of that nature, or we can just, we've had customers say, "I've got a course that one of our teachers developed, it's an elective course, it's really good. We would like to run it on your platform." And so we can port courses onto our learning management system as well. So we just try to be as flexible as we can in terms of addressing the needs of our clients in terms of what they would like to have in terms of curriculum. But the core course content, you know, most of it is developed, but we are currently modifying it and updating it based upon changes in state standards, et cetera.
And have you ever, do you ever drop courses for financial reasons?
Generally not. I mean, there might be a course or something that's just, you know, after a couple of years, nobody takes it. It's like, okay, well, why are we having this? Nobody likes it, nobody wants it, you know, so it kind of fades out. But we don't just say, okay, we didn't have enough people taking this course, so we're just going to drop it. We haven't had that experience, you know, like, you know, like, it's not up to our expectations, so we'll just drop it.
Now, you mentioned that the teacher- Now, you mentioned that the teachers, there are various options of who employs the teachers. So I think I understand that part. Who performs the administrative functions for the school? And, I mean, what are the administrative functions for a virtual school?
Well, in, in terms of the partnership that we're proposing for, for the fall, I mean, the district controls all the administrative decisions, policies, guidelines, et cetera. I mean, you tell us exactly how you want, you know, expectations set up, regardless of what aspect of the program it is. And you decide, you know, whether it's, you know, grading scale, whether it's, you know, an online attendance policy, whether it's a trillency policy, a completion policy, a test retake policy. You decide what that is. We'll, we'll work with you, we'll set that expectation up. And then whoever, in this case, I think it would be Dennis would be the administrator, that would complete those, you know, that administrative function in terms of managing that process. So we provide them access to the learning management system and all the data reporting and tracking necessary. And we would work with the district before we launched it to define what your policy expectations are. And we would build that into the courses under your particular agreement.
Who monitors teacher performance and conduct, I guess? How, how do we know that teachers doing what they should do at the level they should do it at?
Well, in our, if you're using our teachers for some courses, we have an administrative staff, just like we have a principal and assistant principals at our offices. Our office, our corporate office is located in Oklahoma City. But our principals and assistant principals monitor teacher performance on, you know, a regular basis. They, they meet with them and review performance, I think, on a weekly basis. But every online communication that occurs between a teacher and a student is logged, in a communication log. So there's a permanent communication log for every student. So regardless of what is said, whether it's email, a chat session, interactive whiteboard, and then teachers often go to make notes in there as well about particular situations with students. That is a permanent archived record that's there for anybody to review at any time they want to, to check on that.
And how do you deal with inappropriate behavior on the student's part? Either with a teacher bullying other students in chat rooms, inappropriate language? How, is it, would it be up to us to set policies and monitor that? Or how do you monitor that?
Well, I mean, again, if our teachers are the ones that you're using, they are trained and experienced in terms of how to address those things and address them, you know, with the students, document them, and the student communication logs as well. If you want to set district policies about certain types of, you know, performance, actions taken, we can do that. But I mean, generally, the teachers address those directly with the students. And if it's not changed in any way, then they can block those students from certain types of components of the system where they, they, they can't go in and do certain things, or they'll block them out. Or, you know, they'll, they'll find ways of addressing it depending upon whether it's an in-district partnership like we're talking about or whether it's a virtual program. But that's very, we take that very closely, and Jim could address that with his experience in Minnesota as well.
Well, I think what we're trying to say here is, is that we're a supplement to what you people do. So, we're a supplemental program. And so, if you use our teachers, just like Gary said, you know, there's, there's guidelines that have to be followed. Hardly ever have I ever seen, and I've dealt with probably in the last almost three years now, since we started Minnesota Virtual High School, we've probably served over 10,000 students. And I can't recall one that we had to dismiss because of inappropriate behavior. There were some times that we had to tell the students that was completely inappropriate. If they wanted to continue online with us, I would talk to the administrator from the charter school because we were partners in saying that we're having difficulties here and we're willing to give this, this student another opportunity. But outside of that, that's, that doesn't happen very often. Students know that, you know, this is a, this is an opportunity for them. They've never had this chance before. And a lot, for a lot of our students that we served, this is the last chance that they may get for an education because they've tried everything else. And they feel comfortable with this because these are kids that were born with technology in their hands. And so there's more of a comfort level. We find that to be true as well.
I thank you very much. I think those are all my questions for the moment. I have any comments, but I'll let other board members ask questions.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak or question? If not, I'd like to say something. Could I just say something, please? This is excellent. I'm really impressed with this. It's, and the reason I think I'm most excited is giving the young people another opportunity for success. And I heard the word "success" a number of times in your presentation. What piqued your interest to move in this? What is your, if you could just tell me briefly, your background?
My background? I was a former high school Spanish teacher. Taught for about eight years. Got to the point where I wanted to do something different, a little bit more diverse. And I got involved with educational technology solutions. Started off with a company that was owned by Houghton Mifflin Publishing Company. And over the years, I have been involved with just about any aspect of educational, technology-based solutions that you could think of. I've, I've done pure curriculum integrated learning systems. I've done online assessment solutions with computer-adapted diagnostic testing and just formative assessment solutions for school districts. I've worked with content development companies that developed content for publishers like Houghton Mifflin, Holt and Reinhardt. We were basically ghostwriters for those folks. Worked with a company that developed kind of like, almost like a response intervention type solutions, customized solutions for districts at risk to go in and analyze their curriculum, determine where gaps were in their curriculum, build content to fill those gaps. And then, at one point, I ran my own company. Way back when the internet wasn't even in schools yet, I was, I ran a global learning corporation, which was my own company, that connected classrooms of students from around the world via, at that point, packet-switching networks and telephone lines, which was almost unheard of in the classroom. But I've always had a passion for online learning. And when the opportunity came up three years ago that I started looking at online learning, I was at an ACol conference, which is the online learning organization in, in the US. I just was intrigued with it. Because of my prior experience with my own company, I still had that learning passion for online learning and what it could do for school districts and kids. And started interviewing with companies and talked to several. When I went to Advanced Academics and I saw their instructional model that's out there, and this is what I want to be associated with the best, and so, there I am.
And one other question. For me, there's no greater joy in life than interacting with young people. Do you miss a closer contact with young people? Or do you, is there, do you feel that you have that contact with them?
Yeah, I, I miss one-on-one with the students, but I know what I'm doing. Brings a lot of one-on-one interaction with a lot of students that normally would, would fall through the cracks, that would get left behind or would get frustrated. My own son, he's adopted, so I can brag about him a little bit here, is a very gifted individual, but miserable at school because he had to sit there and listen to, he was, you know, six months ahead of where the class was, but he had to stay with the class. And, you know, when I started with this company, he said, you know, Dad, I had online learning. He said, "I had my PhD by now", you know, because I was just bored in the classroom. So I, I miss that personal interaction with students because when I was teaching, I was always taking, I took kids to Europe. I did all kinds of things with kids, just to broaden their horizon and their experiences. This way, I feel like I'm giving so many more opportunities to kids. I don't have that one-on-one interaction, but I know they're getting it from a lot of really top-quality educators that care.
Hey, Joe?
My question's probably for Dr. Earl. I'm trying to literally envision this. So, we're talking about the 20 kids that we might get back. Would they be in our buildings? Would they be at home?
I think it'd be a, it'd be a combination. I think we'd have some, I mean, they would have their counselor that would work with them as well. And I think that's one of the reasons, you know, Dennis had talked about that. But I think it's, it's going to be different, like it is now, for any students that take online courses. Some of them are at home, some of them can come in, meet with them, or work from, from inside the school. But I think it's going to be different for each of those, those students. And I think that's, we'll try to address it individually to start with.
They were, but they were going to go to an actual virtual school, right? As opposed to...
They'd expressed interest in that.
They'd apply.
Okay.
They'd apply.
Okay. So typically...
I would envision most of them being at home.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know. This is very exciting. Mr. Mahoney, like I said, and Amy Harrington recognizing the need as a counselor. There are kids, there are kids we don't see. You know, they're truant, or they're hungry, or whatever, and we're not seeing their faces. And so, if we can, you know, not only start this, but if we can find those kids and engage them.
Just one comment. I'd like to say that there was a student on our presentation up here. I spoke to Dennis real briefly, and I said, "See that student up there?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "There was a young man that was completely homeless. He'd lived in a wrecked car in Minnesota in the wintertime, just like it is here. Both parents were incarcerated. And he was way behind in his education. But he was a sharp young man, real, pretty sharp. He just, just was down on his luck, and you can see why. And someone approached him about online learning. He signed up with us and happy to say, he, he's graduated, so...
Excellent.
He's in college right now. And that was just last year that that occurred.
That's great. Yeah, they're out there.
Oh, you bet they are, absolutely.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
I have some more questions.
Okay.
It's easy to find individual examples. I'm sure there are students that start and drop out as well, correct?
I'm sorry?
It's easy to find individual examples, but I'm sure there are students that start and drop out as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so...
There's no doubt, in your program as well.
I know that.
I know.
Yeah, this is not a panacea. This is just another solution.
Another opportunity for success.
Another opportunity to address that unique need to try to keep the students...
But if I might, Phil, this is something, the way I look at it, and I'm, and I'm saying this maybe a little boastfully because I had the distinct honor in this district to teach the first internet class when every website on it was about an eight and a half by 14. And I came to this group, and that, you're not the same people, but we at that time talked about expanding it and going into headlong, and people couldn't see the value of a hypertext transfer protocol, which became the internet. And so, the reason I mention that is kind of where I'm going with this. I think what's going to be real interesting, we, we had a situation in Longfellow a couple of years ago. And all the tools that the adults thought that we'd use, we, we went on, used our district site and everything else. And I happened to call a kid over who had a little deal phone, and next thing you know, I had 35 kids that came in and we were able to talk to those kids because it was something that the kids were using that we really, myself included, they weren't caught up on. And I, I think what's, what you're going to see is that we're going to start real small, kind of like a beachhead, it's going to be tiny in the beginning. But I think as people see the application of this and they start to realize that, you know, I think about our scheduling alone. I mean, I'm going back a few years at Longfellow, but we had a number of kids that were trying to take classes to high school and couldn't fit in what they wanted to fit in. And who knows? Maybe we can work out something where maybe some of those, those, you know, you, you certainly as a board, you know the schedule issues that you have to face trying to, with a limited budget, maybe their opportunity is there. I just don't think that, you know, really, we know all of those things, and it's kind of hard to guess and speculate. But just knowing that this is the way that a lot of our students think and the way that they operate, I think, I think we'll, we'll see consistent growth. And, you know, so...
Well, I, I don't disagree at all with the value of online learning. I mean, I think sometimes this debate has gone where the online misinterpreted as to whether someone thinks online learning is valuable or not. That's not the debate to me. The debate to me is whether we are going to provide online learning with a for-profit company that's not teaching a single Wabatosa course. So, I'm thinking along those lines. And the reason I'm thinking that, you know, you can think of the Wabatosa name as our trademark, the Wabatosa School District. We have a reputation. And when students graduate from here, they have a degree from Wabatosa. They tell that to someone from another city or somewhere else in the state. They have a feeling for what that means. So now, we're going to have students that have a degree that says Wabatosa on it without having taken a single Wabatosa course. What does that mean? Are we willing to dilute our trademark and reputation that way? I mean, it's just, to me, it's just something to think about. I, I would, it seems odd to me to have a student eventually from Green Bay have a Wabatosa degree and have it represent what Wabatosa represents without even having been here or taken a single course in Wabatosa. So that's more a philosophical approach to this. I guess my other comment is, I was a little surprised that the 20 families that were going to potentially leave the district had been contacted about this. Unless board members have been polled and you know we're going ahead for this for certain, it just seems kind of odd to contact families as, as an option that they, that might be coming forward. It seems to me that we're kind of moving, I think the board should discuss whether there is a 20-student model for how we provide education in Wabatosa. You know, 20 students want to leave, so we're going to open an online school. 20 parents leave from Montessori, we're going to open a Montessori school. You know, I can find 20 families that, you know, love music, so that, that mean we should open a music school? I could find 20 families that don't think they're getting the right special education, so they want a different model. Should we open a school for that? I mean, I just think if that's the way we're going to go, then we need to identify, you know, what are the specific, if we have a core education in Wabatosa and there are going to be specific variations of that that we could offer, what are all of those specific variations? And let's talk about them and rank them the way that we want to order them. It just seems to me that, while online learning is, is a valuable thing, if we're all, you know, one of the reasons that's been offered several times for doing this is that 20 students might leave the district. That means the only reason that we're doing it is for, you know, to keep those students in the district for the money. And I know that's not the only reason, but that's what's been said.
Well, if I can respond to that, it's not just for those 20 students. And if that's what my description leads you to believe, that we're just doing it for that reason, we've been spending a lot of money on online courses, and I know I've said that repeatedly. So it's not just for those students. We have 80, Beth, I believe it's 82 students, actually, that have signed up for Econ that are taking an online course. And my question would be, if we're not, which all of, this is all, you know, it's, it's all for for-profit, so everybody, there's always for-profits out there. And I guess, what would you suggest if we don't go through a company to provide content, what would be the other route to take?
Well, if I could be blunt, I would say I would expect to see that as a number of options in a report you had given us. These are the various options I considered, and I'm choosing this option for these reasons. Off the top of my head, I could think that we develop our own online courses. And we use our teachers, and we make them consistent with our curriculum.
The costs associated with developing our own courses, because I've gone through that process. And it's, it's not even reasonable to have a consideration for it because the cost to do it is unrealistic. And I'm sure with the development of courses, you guys have developed courses, you probably have some, some ideas of what those courses cost. It's just not a reasonable way to provide it.
You know, we, we've had numerous conversations with, with districts that have weighed the pros and cons of developing courses. Lots of districts that have developed courses and then decided that, you know, it's too expensive, it's too time-consuming, it just detracts the teachers from what they're going to do. And it's very difficult to keep it updated and maintained as staff turns over, different priorities come in, state standards change, et cetera. But there are some folks that feel strongly that they want to do that. If there are, after reviewing the rigor of our courses, if there are concerns about, well, in Wabatosa, our curriculum has this component that your course does not have. our curriculum has this component that your course does not have, we can put that component into it appropriate place based upon your scope and sequence. So there are, there are ways we can modify content there, address some concerns of that, of that nature.
It is an important concern, so I wonder about students that try this, and it doesn't work for them. If the courses aren't blended with ours in some way, if they're in our district, they can't just drop into a high school, you know, that has courses that are completely different from the one they've been taking online. So blending the courses together would be an important thing, I would think.
I, I would think that if, when you have a curriculum, you sit down and look at the curriculum, you're going to see that, you know, the content is extremely similar. There may be unique differences in terms of sequencing, or different components you may have that you do during the district that may not be built into the course. But those things can be addressed, you know, as we move forward. But the rigor, you know, from what we've seen, it's there. And a lot of, for example, we, we pulled some data recently in, in Oklahoma from our statewide virtual high school partners there, and the virtual students outperformed the brick and mortar students, what I call brick and mortar students. I have to say that clearly because I was, oh, that sounded like a totally different word at one point in the past. But the traditional school students on the end of instruction exams, I mean, the virtual students outperformed those local students in every category except, subject except one, you know, stand up just, they're just undershot by a few points in the other. So the rigor is there. And, you know, sometimes you talk about students dropping out. There are kids who look at this and say, "Well, I'm tired of the, you know, the school routine. I'm going to do this because I know it's going to be easier." And they get their eyes opened that this is just as demanding, if not more demanding, than a lot of the classes that they have in the traditional local school district. So it, I'm sure that you're great company to take a look at this and review the rigor. And then if there are areas where Wawa Tosa does something unique, then we would have a conversation about how we could put that into these courses to address your concern that students starts here but doesn't want to finish for whatever reasons and goes back to the traditional classroom setting, that, you know, and what they have worked on here and what they're doing there.
And thank you, and I do want to thank you for your candor. I know I've asked a lot of questions.
No, that's a good question.
This is the first time we've actually discussed this, so I've, I was kind of bringing with questions.
Questions are the least, so you're interested in the listening.
Well, I did some reading on it. And Dr. Eel, I guess I'll just point this out to other board members, we have three meetings left in the summer, right? July, and two in August. So if this is something that's going to be started up next year, I'm just going to point out that, you know, not having received any information on this from the administration yet, things are going to have to move pretty fast. So we're going to have to decide if that's acceptable as a board to move that quickly.
Again, the purpose of, of tonight's meeting is to share information. We're not looking for board approval for, we don't, we don't, we're not violating any board policies by having students take online courses. And we're not looking to change policies, we're not looking to go down a path where, that would require board approval at this time.
But you would expect to present something for board approval by September, correct?
I don't believe that we would, it would be necessary to have board approval to have students taking online courses, whether they're students that were electing to go out, that's still available right now. We have students that, whether they're taking one course, and that's the only online course, it's a full-time student taking courses. And I guess unless the board tells me that it needs to be approved, we're going to pursue it as we were. Because I think the question, why were we contacting these parents? Because I believe it's in the authority of the administration to do it. And I don't know that we needed board approval to, to contact those parents and encourage them that we have an option that we're pursuing and that we have an option right now. We could say, "Advanced Academics is gone, we don't want to work with you. We have online course vendors that we do use, and we can provide those online courses to those students."
Well, I guess if I'd known that this was going to move forward without board approval, I wouldn't have asked so many questions.
Mr. Meyer, did you hear anything?
Yes, I'm sure it was said, but I'm, but I missed it. A student doesn't have to be all online or all brick and mortar, do they? If they're in our, if there are students resident in our district, can they pick and choose occasional courses?
I see a head shaking.
Yes.
Yes. So, okay. Now, hearing Mr. Kroner's point about our brand and our mission, I believe it's more than philosophical that there is a lot of substance to that conversation. And that if this were to scale up to some point, we'd really start to ask, are we just a storefront for a online operation and it has nothing to do with Wawa Tosa, you know, students or residents or taxpayers anymore? But on the other hand, if, if there's a, a selective usage of this that can add to our portfolio to serve students according to a strategy, that's a different, different thing. And I think it's important that, that be explicit in the conversation, and I think prior to Mr. Kroner's questions, I would have assumed it, but I don't think it's wise for us to make those kind of assumptions that these things should be discussed and explicitly talked about to see. So we know, you know, what is it, what is, what's the mission of this endeavor? And, and so, you know, we, we do keep an eye on what it means to who we are and what we do and who we serve. So I, you're heard by me, Mr. Kroner, thank you, I appreciate, there's a good set of comments.
Miro?
I guess, again, just want to say the important part to me is that we can differentiate. I mean, we, we talk about that all the time, you know, getting, getting to kids. When we do have a discussion, if we do, about our brand of Wawa Tosa education, that'll be real interesting. I think our brand is our mission, which is up there. And, you know, it'd be nice if we could tie it up neat and tidy and say, "If you came from Wawa Tosa, you know this, this, and that, and you look like this, and..." You know, until all of our kids are branded, you know, we're not going to be branded in what we're offering and delivering. So again, those kids are out there that need different opportunities, and they need to be recognized, and they need to, to be reached. And I think we've been very successful in our charter schools, and we've been very diligent in the work we've done, even though this is not a charter school at this point. I think we can still look to the way that administration introduced those programs, to how they've been run on an ongoing basis. And, you know, yes, if twenty kids need Montessori, and we are able to provide that, why not? Why not? So that's all.
Thank you. Is there any, one last question before I open it to the community, if there's anyone here, please?
Thank you, but I think this is important. Thinking about what you said, I understand what you're saying about, you know, the board has authorized, you know, that we provide services to students, and that includes online learning. And you've determined that the best method for supplying that within our district is Advanced Academics. Okay, that makes sense to me. I have, you know, strong questions about going statewide with it, so I'll state that. As far as board approval, what I'm wondering is if, if these students go full-time online, are online degrees also within our policy? Or is that something the board would have to decide that our district is going to grant an online degree?
I don't, there's no limitations within policy to the number of online courses a student can take. So administratively, we can make those determinations that what's appropriate for them, and we have done that. Like I mentioned, we have students that, I mean, I, I think it's, when you, I've, I've argued often that a student taking one course, and that's the only course they're taking, they're a full-time student. Because they may be able to complete that course in a couple of weeks, and they move on to the next. But we're just in that mindset that you've got to take five courses, and you've got to take, or you've got to take six. And so it creates different definitions of what an online full-time student is. But if that's the only course work they're taking, and regardless of how they are progressing down that path, but, I mean, I, I think that if there is an okay or an opportunity for a student that wants to learn that way, that have had problems, and they're choosing to do it, yeah, I think we can, we can provide it, and we can ensure that it meets, meets our, our high school diploma.
So starting in fall, then, one of the marketing aspects of our district is that we can offer online degrees to students, so we can go out, they could come here for school, high school, and get an online high school degree?
I guess I wouldn't market that now. I mean, I think we provide opportunities for students in a lot of different ways, and this is one that we've been offering, and we're now offering in a different way. I mean, I, I guess I don't, I don't want this conversation to go outside of what my purpose in having these people here tonight. It's not to present statewide charter school, and not to go down that path right now. Do I have a sincere interest in doing it? Because I think, number one, Wawa Tosa, the brand of Wawa Tosa can take, drive a lot of students that might decide to go elsewhere. We have the highest ACT score of any school district. That provides virtual learning, if we were in that market, of all the other, I believe it's twelve, whatever it is, but all the, the district behind those. So there's a competitive thing, and I've, I've thought through this quite a bit, of what would be the advantage. I've also looked at the bill that's out there to eliminate the cap on virtual school open enrollment. We, we've discussed that, I've shared that with them, that there is a cap on it, and that there's a proposal to eliminate it. So, no, at this point, I wouldn't market it and say that, that's, I would market that we try to meet the needs of all kids, and here's another way we do it. Same way I would look at, we offer a Montessori school, or we offer, we have a STEM charter school within our district.
I was just trying to clarify the depth of our involvement next year. I mean, for these twenty students that would have left the district to go to an online school, if they stay here, I assume that's to be part of an online school. Is that, is that correct?
They're taking online classes. I wouldn't term it as a school. I would say it's really not much of a difference than what we're doing, except we're actively pursuing students to take those classes. Well, that's, we actively pursue students to take online classes now when we think it's appropriate. So nothing is really changing, other than where we're getting our courses from.
So if a junior were to move into the district next year, could they say, "I would like to finish my last two years online"? Could that be allowed?
It'd be a discussion. I think we would have to consider it. I think one of, one of the reasons we want to start small is to see what it's all about. At some point, I think that's, that's completely appropriate for our district. I think we need to have that opportunity for kids.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
With my thinking, I would summarize my thinking as this, that if we have students with unmet needs, we want to find a way to serve those needs, and if this is one of those vehicles, that's wonderful. That said, we have to be vigilant that we don't dilute our focus from our mission for who we are and how we want to deliver education. And where that line is, I don't know tonight, but I think it's good that we keep it in our conversation and in our consciousness that we have to watch that. It can't be just like we did with the summer school where we did, I don't think we actually took a vote on a strategic direction to, maybe I'm wrong, I don't recall such a vote, to grow the summer school. It was sort of a consensus and conversation, and administration had authority to do it. If we were to go, as you said, Dr. Eel, to full statewide charter, or, or somehow start diluting our mission, our, our focus on our mission, we need to all talk first.
Is there any community comment, please? Okay. To the three of you, I extend a very huge thank you. This has been extremely informative, and I think it just is beginning to touch on the questions that we will have. But thank you for the fine presentation, the time you've taken, the questions you've answered. So we're pleased that you are here.
Our pleasure, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. If we may go on to the action items, please, Mr. Kroner, the 2011-12 budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Meyer has been doing this for the last six years, I just want you to know. I'm reading it tonight, and it still counts. It is recommended that the school board approve the attached proposed 2011-2012 budget. Fund expenditures are summarized as follows. General Fund 10, seventy million, four hundred and five thousand and forty-five dollars. Donation Fund 21, ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. Special Education Fund 27, eleven million, three hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. Non-referendum debt service fund 38, zero dollars. Capital expansion fund 41, one million, four hundred thousand dollars. Food services fund 50, two million, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Recreation department fund 80, one million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Total expenditures of all funds, eighty-six million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Less inter-fund operating transfer from Fund 10, a negative five million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and one dollars. Net total expenditures of all funds, eighty-one million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The 2011-2012 budget will be adjusted in October once final enrollment, state aid, and state revenue cap figures are available. The tax levy will be set at that time, an ISO move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Do you want to comment at all, that Mr. Meyer is not here? Okay, thank you, yes.
I have a comment. I didn't comment on the budget at the last meeting, but I'm really happy that we have the budget that we have. And what's most important is when the students come to school in the fall, school's going to look the same to them. They're going to have the same teachers, same courses, also many new things coming along. And we're still going to be able to improve what we're working on as well. And that happened because of the hard work of the administration and the sacrifices that all the employees made. And it's unfortunate that the decreased funding that we had had to be, come from our employees. But they should be commended for stepping forward and helping us produce a budget like this that's going to produce a school year, this year at least, that's, that's virtually the same as last year. And that we don't really have to stop progress that we're making. And even though it's been a tumultuous year, you know, we can look forward to next school year with pride and know that we're still going to move forward and educate the kids in Wawa Tosa.
Is there any community comment, please? Dingan, may we have a, Shirley, please?
I just, I don't have the budget that was presented two weeks ago with me, but it seemed like it was somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-seven million dollars and change was the, um, it looks a little bit different than what we thought it would be.
I think it's the same as was presented.
Mrs. Galanti, please, the roll call vote.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Human Resources, please.
Mrs. Randall?
It is recommended that the school board approve the revision to Policy 3422, Administrator Benefits in the Retirement Fund paragraph to read. The board will pay the required employer contribution to the Wisconsin Retirement System, WRS. The administrator will pay an amount equal to one-half of all actuarially required contributions to WRS. And we will delete the statement, "The board provides required employee and employer contributions to WRS to a maximum of thirteen percent, as was discussed at the June 20th board in-service." An ISO move.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Is there any community comment? See none? Mrs. Galanti, the roll call, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer, would you read the item under Superintendent?
It is recommended that the school board approve Board Member Sharon Newfeld to serve as a representative on the WASBE Policy and Resolution Committee, and also as the... official WASBE delegate at the delegate assembly at the annual meeting in January, as was discussed at the June 13 meeting, and I so move.
Second.
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 Thank you. Any comments or questions? Singun, any community comment or question? Singun, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Dr. Earl, you have one?
The school board had a in-service session to discuss the future, and I think in relationship to being in the world with collective bargaining changes and so on. So, as a result of the in-service, what came out of that is there are two committees that will begin work, two board committees that will begin work. One is a policy committee, there are numerous policies that will need to be amended, looked at, changed regarding the way the school district operates. And that, that committee is going to be chaired by Ann Fee, with members Mary Jo Randall, Tom Deroz, myself, Mr. Chanon, and Mrs. Weber as well. And then there is another committee that is being chaired by Mr. Meyer, and that committee is looking at the compensation for employees and how we are going to compensate in the future. And members of that are Mr. Kroner, Ms. Muehlfeld, Mr. Mack, myself, Mr. Chanon, and Mrs. Weber as well. So, just to announce that those committees will begin work in short order, and will be working through, as I mentioned, the policies and developing a compensation system that will be sustainable and productive for the school district.
Thank you. And one more item. The board annually has a superintendent evaluation, and that will take place beginning now. You each have received some information in your packets, and if you will please complete that survey and return it either to Mrs. Randall or Mrs. Galanti. Mrs. Galanti will, if she received any, will get them to Mrs. Randall, who will go through them and present it to us, and then we will then have a board meeting to discuss that evaluation, first as a board and also with Dr. Earl at another meeting. Mr. Meyer?
Oh, if I may, can we go back when there's opportunity to the committee item?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to get that in before we call.
Sure. Go ahead.
With regards to the compensation committee, the sort of rough plan to proceed is that Mr. Chanon is working, and Dr. Earl are working on a list of policy questions that they need answered, as, which will be the substance of this process. We hope that they will be prepared and framed up to distribute to the committee members by the end of this week, so that there's a week to contemplate them or ponder them. And then, so that will happen at the end of this week. The Fourth of July week will be an off week, and then we'd really like to get a meeting together the week after the Fourth of July week. Is that making any sense? Okay. So, that's how I'm looking at it as chair. If there's any input about doing it some other way, you know, we can refine this as we go. But basically, as I said, it, a series of policy questions administration needs answered in order for them to build a compensation model, a detailed compensation model to bring to, to the committee, or maybe just straight to the board. Maybe the committee just does the policy questions. Have to see how much time we have.
Any comment or questions? Do you have any questions with respect to the superintendent evaluation? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.